Please join us in the pledge of the week. Thank you. We do have a forum tonight. All members are present, uh, excuse me, are present. Casey is on her way. She's just a couple of minutes out, so she'll be here soon. Okay, I see a hand by an ear. Can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion regarding approval of the agenda?
Motion not.
Motion by Gilbert, by Tamara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. Public remarks and concerns. At this point on the agenda, opportunity is provided for an individual or representative of a group to make statements to the board regarding an item not listed on the agenda. The speaker should be limited to three minutes. The board will not take action on an item introduced during this portion of the agenda, as it would constitute an illegal act on the part of the board. Does anybody wish to speak to the board on an item, the only item not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. There is no consent agenda. And we'll move on to action and discussion with the resolution 2324-19 for healing and reconciliation with indigenous peoples and lands. So I have this thing to read. It says, reminder for the audience, restrooms and drinking cupboards are located in the back, right here. When it's time for public input, we're asking that those who wish to speak line up against the wall on the right side of the student center. We will work our way down the line until everyone in line has a chance to speak. Each person will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak. The time will start when you get to the podium. We will notify you when you have one minute left and ring it up. We ask that everyone show respect when people are speaking, refrain from shouting out or making comments. If you are physically unable to line up on the wall, a microphone will be brought to you when it is your turn to speak. Oh, I need to, we have a board policy which says that we will limit each item to thirty minutes. So this is one item, and the policy says thirty minutes. I'm not gonna do that. So in order to extend that time, I need consent of the board. Do I have consent of the board?
Yes.
Okay, so we will extend that as long as, as we said, so that everybody has a chance to speak. Just a point. I've set through quite a few of these. If, if you really want to speak, that's great. If the board hears the same thing over and over and over again, it doesn't do anything to make what you're saying more impactful. So as we get along, it's just natural. I mean, we're gonna hear repetition. When we get to that point, I'm just gonna ask, you know, how many people agree with the last speaker or something, kind of get a consensus of the answers. Okay, so I'm going to open it up for public input before the board has a discussion on resolution number two, twenty-three, twenty-four, dash, nineteen. So if you're interested. I think you're right.
Yes, that's correct. Is it okay if I stand so people know better sooner? I thought, well, first of all, good afternoon, everybody. I'm really glad that everybody's here, right? I think it's an important series of issues, right, that we're all facing as Kelseyville residents, with what's going on within the board or here in the district and outside of it, right? And I thought, for the purpose of providing more clarity, I will talk a little bit about the resolution we have here today to discuss, right? And also give you a little insight of what my last two weeks have been, which I think have been really beneficial for the purpose of understanding everybody, right? The first disclaimer I'm gonna put out there, because I've been asked this question, is, Gilbert, do you align with, say, Kelseyville? Do you align with citizens of Hulley, where you at, right? It's funny that that comes in regard to the resolution, because the resolution was never created with any of those groups in mind or with anything having to do with the name change, right? And I understand how things got wrapped up. Particularly with the last two weeks of speaking to individuals, I was able to understand that even more, okay? So I do acknowledge that, right? But my response has been, I cannot align, right? After speaking to parties and people from both majority groups from our Native American community, I find all arguments compelling, right? And how did I get to say all arguments are compelling? It's because the last two weeks have been really a good process, right? The first people I reached out to speak to me were people from, say, Kelseyville. And with no second doubt or anything, I agreed to a meeting. And we spoke close to three hours with each individual that I met, right? Three hours that I felt were well invested on my behalf. Three hours that attended the meeting, I told everyone, right? Then I met with some citizen folks and some of our Native American community. And everybody got an average of two to two and a half to three hours. But I told everybody, I'm glad we sat down. In some instances, we had breakfast, right? We did not debate. We did not try to prove each other wrong. We did not disagree. We felt common connectors in our specific arguments, right? But most importantly, one of my conditions of meeting with all people were, you have to open up and be vulnerable, right? And we have to be transparent. I'm not sitting with you, with you, to argue with you and tell you why you should accept the resolution, right? It's not about that. I understand why are you for the resolution, why are you against it, right? And in that conversation of understanding, I actually got to know some of these individuals on a personal level, right? We talked about our background. We talked about what Kelseyville meant, right? We talked about what do we see in the future, right? So essentially, it was all a series of pleasant conversations. Essentially, they helped me become more informed and be able to process, because that's what I do typically, right? I'm always collecting data of people by observation, by speaking, by hearing. I have good listening skills, and I put those to practice with everybody at the same level, right? I always try to remain neutral, because I want to be objective, right? You don't want to, Gilbert, that's subjective and that's gonna be leaning one way or the other, because that creates bias, right? In my formation, I always had to remain neutral and objective. Get to the truth, basically. And with all these individuals about hate, right? I was always getting to the truth. And here are some common connectors that I found across everybody that I spoke to from the respective protagonists of this whole situation, right? People agree that there was a division out there that it's ugly, right? People agree that one here and your family kept being born here. Your grandfather came and established a business, and your father took it over, now you're taking it over, right? You worked hard to make Kelseyville a friendly town, right? You've built an identity around Kelseyville, not because of Andrew Kelsey and his brothers, but because of Kelseyville and your contributions to it. And that's the challenging part, right? For both groups to understand. What does that mean for us? What does it mean for you? And it takes having to be vulnerable, right? I sum it up to, if we use aggression and attacks, that's gonna lead to conflict. If we use dialogue and diplomacy, it's gonna lead to solutions, right? And understanding of each other. Those are some of the words I left as I ended my conversations with some of these individuals, right? And think about it, sitting three hours talking to somebody, you know, it must be really good conversation, right? So essentially, that is my sentiment right now in terms of not only what has come here to the board and the school districts in regards to the resolution connecting or people finding connections with what's going on with the name change, right? But it is the temperature gauge of what's happening outside in our community, right? Because I, like everybody else, I want to believe Kelseyville's friendly too, right? And that we're not at this divide, you know, having to prove each other wrong type situation. So my hope would be, funny enough, you know that citizens could kill to save Kelseyville, right? You put those two names together, you get kind of a catchy phrase. That would be my hope, right? That could be done probably through dialogue, but that's in your hands, right? That is your decision on whatever you decide to do. Going to the resolution, I was the author of the resolution. I presented it to my fellow board members as a suggestion that we adopt. Back then, it was obviously called by myself a proclamation. It's a resolution correctly stated here on the board that would honor, right? Look for reconciliation in healing, right? Acknowledging that there is pain within our Native American community. That the Native American community is part of our larger community, right? And the resolution was with the vision that, as a public entity, the school district, we would acknowledge, because resolution essentially, what they do, they acknowledge, they put, you know, spotlight on a commitment of that institution. It's not a law. It doesn't say that because we, as a district, want to honor the students, that I'm forcing this individual to fight by that, right? Or any other person, right? It's saying that, as a school district, we're gonna work towards making those individuals, in this case, Native Americans, feel welcome that whatever trauma they're dealing with, we want to be the part of that process of healing that trauma, right? And that's how it was drafted. Now, I also recognize, on March nineteenth, we submitted a draft that had some language that could have been misinterpreted or miswritten. You can see it right. As language that was suggesting that it could have been biased, right? The so-called, "For as long as we bear the name, we can be truthful." "We can truthfully sign and fully honor indigenous people." That's kind of the thing that kind of sparked this whole movement. And let me explain what the idea was behind that. The idea was that the resolution shouldn't have been truthful, right? This is one truth that I do stand by and also explain why. Native Americans exist after, not only here in Kelseyville, but all across the nation, right? There is an intergenerational trauma that, it's a difficult concept to understand if you haven't dedicated time to try to understand it, but, you know, the things that happen to Native Americans, they exist there. I explain this in a way. My name, or my names are Gilbert, first name. My father is a Wrangler, and my mother is also a Wrangler from a different region in their state. And I traced that five generations. And for me to be Gilbert Wrangler Wrangler, it had involved, for those five generations, thirty-two last names. So my family is like a wire, twisted wires of names, right? I don't know where my direct lineage is. So what I explained is, my last names come from Spain, right? I don't have a direct connection to the things that happened to the Spaniards that were invaded by the Moors. I don't, I don't, I can't connect that way. Just because, and my last names together to one, my mother's Martinez Rodriguez, once in Laos, Quimenes, Diaz, Corillo, a bunch of them, right? But what I do try to understand in terms of our Native American community is there is a direct lineage, right? Think of it, how we stand in there right now. There's some big common last names, right? Dunkins, McLeod, right? It's because they don't move, you know, they're not even mingling like the Spaniards did per se, right? Over there in Mexico, that led up to my sort of, you know, genesis, right? Pretty much, we're kind of local and, and, and many days, so whatever happened five generations ago is much more direct lineage than someone like me, right? So for someone like Clayne Duncan to say Lucy Moore survived and she had to witness that, you know, on Bloody Island, Lucy Moore was, you know, this great grandmother, grandmother, right? And for him to imagine what that child at six years old went through, seeing bodies falling perhaps, having his legs stuck underwater for hours with the tulip weed to breathe, seeing other children die, seeing elders die, that is a traumatic history, right? And it does affect our brain imprint. When I worked with violent students in San Diego, consistently, the circle of violence that the grandfathers brought through gangs, the parents, led to angry children, violent children, that didn't understand why they were angry and violent. You could just look wrong at a child and they would attack you, right? You could try to help a child. I was in that situation, trying to help a child, and I was confronted with aggression, right? So intergenerational trauma is really deep, right? So the resolution looks at those factors, right? We looked at modern statistics. Native Americans are about 4.2% of the US population, right? A really small percentage. How does that reflect? Here in schools, we use a thing called California Dashboard, right? Or California School Dashboard. And in that dashboard, it gives you all the metrics in terms of student performance. You could go by district down to your individual schools. If you want to look at Kelseyville High School and the graduation rate for 2023 for Native Americans, only five graduated, right? But you have to dig deep. I would have to call Dr. Thomas and say, what are your statistics for Native Americans within Kelseyville District? Because the dashboard, because that group is so small, is not represented on the dashboard. You see empty lines. So if you're not knowledgeable about how the dashboard works, and you go in and you want to say, well, how are Native Americans doing in graduation rates? You're gonna see blank, so you're gonna assume, well, they're not graduating. They're not academically proficient. They don't go to school. And it's an entire misconception, because the system was not designed right, right? It's under those circumstances, right? I work in health currently. Native Americans lead in the death index for all chronic illness, including diabetes, obesity, heart disease, respiratory disease, right? If you're non-native, you're half, uh, percent, half the time, I don't mention how much it meant to you. I didn't mention how much it pains you to lose it. And I just say, well, they lasted one point, today we're called this. And then I end the resolution, right? It's the same analogy. We have to face the truth, right? Resolutions are not uncommon. Right? That is the Pasadena Unified School District. The Little Moretero, I think they quote percentages, and right there, I think the fourth or so were as. This was dedicated to Latino and indigenous students. That's a California district, Pasadena. I'm gonna flip through these, right? I'll give you a couple of minutes to kind of read through, you know, look through them. This one is from federal government, 2023, I think. A proclamation on Indigenous Peoples' Day. You know, recognizing contributions, recognizing struggles. Some of these resolutions I'm showing, you know, they quote indigenous people as a surviving, resilient group of individuals having endured really harsh conditions. That was by President Biden. This one is from the Australian government. This is an actual apology, right? This is an actual apology that their government did to indigenous people. You know, they're sorry, and I see it already like three times. We say sorry, we say sorry, we say sorry. Here's some land acknowledgements. So in terms of land acknowledgement, some folks from what I hear were confused that the resolution was gonna be read at the events in the high school. No. The resolution pretty much will pass or not pass. If it does pass, it is filed, right? It's kind of our existing commitment. It's historically within the district. Somebody pulls up archives, they're gonna say that resolution passed on this day for this purpose. But it's our commitment as a district, right? That we're just gonna honor people and all that. We do mention a land acknowledgement in the resolution as a recognition for events. And that kind of sparked for me sitting in graduation events for our Kelseyville High School students. And we have it welcomed in Spanish, we have it welcomed in English. And I turned my head over to see the students who were graduating. I saw Native American students with some elements of Pomaragalia on the captain gown. And I said, where's the welcome in Pomar, or, you know, eastern Pomar? Where is the land acknowledgement? So I thought that if we're going to do Spanish and English, being that our major demographics are, you know, white, Hispanic, and Native American, that we would have a land acknowledgement. And those are brief statements, right? Basically, that state, we recognize that we're here on the land that was once home to, and then we named our people, right? And then we say, we honor those people here today during this event. And then we go with the program, right? There is a, someone reached out. Their idea that the land acknowledgement, that what it would do would be that somehow it would give, it would open the floodgates to people reclaiming lands and that they're gonna take them back. It doesn't do that. You have to go through a huge legal process and years and years of going back and forth to be able to reclaim a land from anyone, right? Even within non-natives, that's the case as well. So land acknowledgements are basically just a, an acknowledgement as a name states for the people that we hear before and that were kind of here, for those people that steward for this land, right? They were our stewards, basically, right? And here are some examples, right? And they're kind of, you know, in different sentiments, you know, some are really brief, some have a little more detail. This one's from Rebel Community Services, a local nonprofit. That's from Oakland University. This one from Yolo County Board of Education. And here in Lake County, we have, I mean, I know County Office of Ed is to work there. We have land acknowledgement there. I was doing some work with the County of Lake for the Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Forums. They were reading land acknowledgements there, right? Other districts, Upper Lake District has a land acknowledgement as well. And so they're really, I mean, I do work for the Middletown Art Center. There's a land acknowledgement there as well. So, you know, they're really popular, you know? I've been knowing about land acknowledgements from my time working for the governor's office, right? During Schwarzenegger administration. Those are land acknowledgements then, you know? So they're pretty popular. They're not threatened to take away land from anyone. And there's some more examples, right? You know, that's from the A's. And this one, Upper Lake Unified School District, right there. And this one, I think was also, this one was used as well by some other groups and as well as Lake County Office of Ed, I think read this one as well. So, you know, essentially, those are kind of acknowledgements that are different from resolution, right? And the resolution, like I said, is not law. We are inviting the community to join us in this effort. You choose if you want to join. It's up to you, right? That's your right. And then the other point I want to go to is, there's this conception that somehow the resolution could be weaponized. And when I heard that, I got really frustrated, because the resolution should not be weaponized. And that's why we got through this series of conversations to make sure it's not that way. So the one area that, you know, could have been interpreted as a weaponization was the part about the name. In terms of the efforts that both major groups here are discussing right now at the BGN, right? I could see as somebody putting up, oh, they mentioned something about the name in that resolution in the district, so, I don't know, depending on who you get over there, they might be convinced. So we proposed to eliminate that paragraph. So there's no, the word name is not no longer in the resolution. Like, because an important part of the resolution is throughout the other parts of it, which is acknowledging people, community ton of people, our indigenous people, recognizing the historic past, those two components. The one thing that will could be weaponized, I'm not gonna show it to you, but, and I'm not gonna say what it is, is this that I found. Right? And I'm not gonna have it to rip. Just go through this, it's gonna be weaponized. Yes, ma'am?
I'm looking at the agenda, and we all took time off of our long day at work. So we come here to express our opinion, and I feel like you're educating us on your opinion. He's asking, and it's supposed to be our opinion and our turn to talk.
I'm about to wrap up. I'm about to wrap up, I will. But I'm gonna have thirty more seconds to what I was gonna say. I think the education is necessary, because there's a lot of miseducation, right? Around this issue, so I'm just trying to level it out, so we all understand where this is all coming from, right? It's kind of painful to see people are misunderstanding and getting upset, right, amongst yourselves and all that, or something that is not understood. So that, we're just holding there, which I'm not gonna share, I'm not gonna say the name, can be weaponized, can be used against one of your arguments. And somebody questioned the resolution. Could you give us citations? I'm not a historian. And like I told the folks back then during COVID, I'm not a scientist. So what I do is I look towards the scientific community. In this case, the community of researchers and natural, you know, blogger that these day know history. I'm looking for reputable. Then what?
There's a second.
We'll make it available. We'll put it up on the, on the website. Yeah, I was just trying to show you that the resolution carries no weight in any of your arguments for or against the name change.
So let's, 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 wait, 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 wait. Let's, let's not, let's, they're not arguments. Let's listen to the opinions of residents of Kelseyville and anybody else that's here. Thank you. I was. Gilbert, thank you very much. Gilbert was, was. Okay, so we're gonna have people line up, and then one by one, they can come up to the microphone. We're gonna keep it at three minutes. There's something else I was gonna say, but I forgot. Oh, most important thing. We're here to listen to you, and we're very happy that you guys came to these meetings. We also have meetings on the third Tuesday of every month, and you're more than welcome to attend those. And the agendas for those are posted usually on the Friday before those meetings, so. Who would like to speak to the board tonight?
Elbers, first.
Me? Okay, students.
It's gonna have to be quick.
So you have two people there, so you can go six minutes.
Six, okay.
She's gotta read the other half.
Okay, perfect. Hello and good evening. My name is Nicholas Del Bosco, and I am the president of the student body at Kelseyville High School. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak before you today. I'm here today not to give my own opinion, but to represent the wishes of my class, the class of 2024, of whom I was president last year, and who Zella Corubius is now president. Resolution 23 slash 24 dash 19, one second. Resolution 23/24-19, one section states, whereas the Kelseyville Unified School District will announce a land acknowledgement at every major event of importance, including graduation. The desire to understand and bring further acknowledgement to the plight of the native peoples of our area is admirable without question, but the way it is done must be thoughtfully considered and with thorough input from the community and those students this board has responsibility over. The fact is, this section of the resolution directly affects your students, excuse me, your students, and more specifically, my class's activities. Therefore, it is the business of the seniors to give our opinion to the board. I cannot speak for future classes, nor will I give you advice on this matter from my own understanding, but I have spoken with students in my class about having a land acknowledgement at our graduation, and there were two things they expressed to me. Firstly, they were frustrated that this might be put into graduation ceremonies without our consultation. Secondly, they requested an anonymous poll to be sent to the class so that interested students could express their perspectives on the matter. I did indeed complete a survey of the class of 2024 as they requested, but before I share the results of the survey, I would like to share some personal feelings that I have heard from students in the senior class. As previously mentioned, many of them were frustrated that this hadn't been discussed with our class first, before putting a priority like this in the resolution, considering it would affect our graduation. It may be the will of this board to have land acknowledgements, but that might not be the will of this class for their graduation. Every board member has had their own graduation, and if this is something that these members cared about, they could have done it then. Furthermore, a question was also brought up to me, even by some Native students in my class, that considering how divisive this topic is for our community, is it appropriate to bring such a political issue to this kind of community event? This resolution states things like, the land acknowledgement will allow healing for the entire community, but all this resolution has done, at least by my perception, is open up old wounds, cause further hurt, and create anger and strife among the people of Kelseyville. By singling out one people and population for recognition at graduation, this resolution will trample on all the memories and experiences of the rest of the community. This resolution alienates many and discounts all who have suffered through time. Kelseyville is too large and diverse to allow only a certain group a voice, especially when it leaves out the vast majority of people here. Finally, there's the matter of the poll and its results. There are 114 students in the senior class. Seventy-four decided to express their feelings on the matter. The other 40 did not feel comfortable stating their feelings on this contentious issue. This, I might add, is a better percentage turnout than every presidential election since William Howard Taft until. Nonetheless, the results which I can provide each board member with, and if any interested parties are interested in seeing as well, the results are this: over 60% of the students polled do not want a land acknowledgement at our graduation ceremony. It is simply too divisive an issue and is considered inappropriate for this type of ceremony. As stated, I cannot speak for future classes, and maybe it is appropriate to ask further in future classes about this issue. But it is something that is specific to that class and that time because it is their graduation. Please take our desires into account when voting on this resolution, and we humbly but firmly request you respect our desires for our ceremony.
So, I would like to thank the Kelseyville Unified School District Board of Trustees for having this second meeting, and those trustees that have taken their time to have conversations with us, you know, the community members. Some trustees responded to the fact that there were misunderstandings and misinformation, as Gilbert stated, that was received by the public. I agree with that, and in the past two weeks, though, the process has become more clearly defined, and we thank you for that also. I also believe there is a misunderstanding between this board and its community. What happened? From the community's perspective, it appeared that the KVUSD board was aligning itself with the Citizens for Healing Group, the group that is trying to change the name of Kelseyville to Canotai. Somehow, they, C4H, knew about and ended up at that meeting. This is not the first time this has happened with this group. We are very concerned with this group's influence on this resolution. They have labeled the Kelseyville community with names such as Hitlerville, Kelsey evils, and everyone that disagrees with their position on the name change is labeled a racist. Hence the grave concern from the Save the Name group and community members that this group would have influence on this board and/or the resolution. It has been stated by trustees that the KVUSD does not take sides on political issues, or we have no place as a district in the political arena. This resolution that was intended to be a land use resolution has now become a resolution that is politically charged. Much of that is because of the Save the Name issue. We also agree that the KVUSD board should not take sides or be political. But things are different now. Because of the proposed name change by C4H, and the current political climate surrounding this resolution and the name change issue, we strongly feel that this school board does not want to be, strongly feel that if this school board does not want to be political or take sides, then this conversation should end. This resolution should be tabled or postponed from consideration until the name change issue has been resolved. Unfortunately, I feel there is no way to separate this resolution issue from the name change issue at this time based on all of the above. In closing, I feel it's important for this school board to build and maintain trust with its community. That said, it's important to not take an action one way or the other that would benefit one side or the other with the Save the Name issue. I understand the desire to pass a resolution, but considering the climate now, in our community, this is not the time.
Hi, I'm Barbara Green, Kelseyville resident. And first, I wanted to point out that I contacted the other five school districts in the county, and none of them, including Upper, told me by phone that they had not, so I'm not sure where that discrepancy is. And second, even with the specific reference to the name removed, the resolution can still be considered politically charged as written. So it's not acceptable for the board to be passing any resolution of this type at this time. I'm just wondering, what is the urgency to having a land off mountain pass now while there is currently a name change proposal being considered by the U.S. Board on Geographic Names? By bringing this up now, I feel the school board would be contributing to the division in this community, and I'm requesting the district table the resolution until the name change issue is resolved.
Hi, my name's Virg Landre, and I want to applaud the work that's been done on getting this all together to acknowledge, to thank the people that were here. And, you know, to me, the importance of this whole thing are the children in this school, and what's passed along. And what came out in the resolution was very good. I mean, it's, I think it's bare bones as far as it really singles out something, but I feel that what should be done, and I'm surprised that it's never been really considered through the years, considering what the person that the school, and, you know, is named after, what his response was with the children and the people, particularly the children, because we have students coming here in the school. And I also want to acknowledge the slander that came from, what's your name?
My name's Mark Borgesani.
Okay, Mark Borgesani. And some of these things I never heard. And as far as the division, the division's been here from back in the 1840s when this whole thing started, and it seems that's continued. I mean, what's one of the things now? Kelseyville, Kelseyville. I mean, you know, but I'm not speaking on the town right now, I'm speaking with the schools, because the name is everything. And this is, you know, what's passed along with this acknowledgement or regard, I mean, it's memorialized, is that this person, what they did was not only condoned and accepted, but promoted the behavior of such things by the nature of what's done when the history is known. The history is not very known, and that's what I think is a big deal, and I want to really applaud you, Gilbert, for bringing up some of this, but it was really brutal. And what we did, I mean, we know a lot more than just acknowledgement, because there's been a division, there's been a separation, and we're a whole community. We are not that, we're 300 years ago. Right now, we are the entire community, we are living in Kelseyville, we're, you know, from here. And it's not the name, it's how everybody has been with each other and worked with each other. And this is the whole important thing. I mean, I think the school should change the name to anything but Canotai. That it should be, you know, a decision on this, and I think this would be a really healing thing. But, you know, I, I feel that when we're talking about, you know, a community, we're talking about everybody, and there's a lot of people that live here that needs to be acknowledged. And we're all in this together, we shouldn't be having any bannings, any kind of things. We're all in the same boat, in the same funk, we're working toward our common dreams. Thank you.
Are we giving one minute warnings? Dr. Thomas? Are we giving one minute warnings?
I have overlooked one that we're going to have.
However, however, I think that they're referring to you, ma'am. I think they have deferred to you, they want to hear what you have to say. That's the way.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Connie Parthita Wright. I'm a graduate of Kelseyville High School, class of 1968. I also had a daughter and a grandson that had graduated from this Kelseyville High I was also selected by the Chamber of Commerce for Lake County as the Rural Student of the Year, and so I really was honored to be selected. I am a descendant of Dr. Fred Hogan of Enerpo Pomor, and our family has been carbon dated to have lived here in Lake County for over 20,000 years. Over the years, my parents have been active in community services, my father being involved in the Kelseyville Fire Department, which was a volunteer organization. My mother, Dorothy Parthita, was responsible for reestablishing healthcare for California tribal people throughout the state of California. The Lake County Tribal Health was one of the first nine Indian health projects established here in California, so we will go up to one of the first tribal healthcare facilities. She also is involved in the establishment of 30 American Indian education centers throughout the state of California. So I follow in the footsteps of my parents, who demonstrated love and dedication to this community. I mentioned these achievements as they focused on the education and health for our tribal communities, seeking to create improvements for our communities in rural areas. The effort this school board is taking to recognize our tribal people here in Kelseyville is part of the foundation for needed change that can enhance the humanitarian and historical changes that are needed to enhance understanding of the importance of education in achieving needed acknowledgement of the historical atrocities experienced by our original Native people. For the past 50 years, I have worked at local, state, regional, and national levels to create needed change throughout the 113 tribes in California. I have witnessed needed changes at various government levels, and it has, is documented in laws, policies, and practice in educational institutions, healthcare providers throughout rural California. I am very proud that this educational body has taken the steps to bring forward what is needed to create the change.
I'm Alan Fletcher, I'm, he's Edwin Pauling, an outlier. In geological terms, that means I'm the same as you, I just live a little bit away from Kelseyville, I live in Seacom, all the same. I knew nothing about the tribes when I came to Lake County. And then I started a meeting on KVSD, three tribal members, had programs around, I got to talking, and got slowly to appreciate what we're going through. We're not working on behalf of the tribes, we're working as settlers, as people who are not natives who came here, one way or another, and want to make the place welcoming for all. In terms of our organization, we have embarked on a program of education, we have dug deeply into the history. My PhD isn't in history, it's in computer technology, but I can research stuff. And the deeper I research, the worse it got. Personally, bad words. I could, if you go to healings.org and look up my seven-page history, you'll see quotes from about what the Kelseys personally.
Over the course of their spring break, to paint a beautiful mural, the fact is, I got in my hand, checked totally over $26,000 to pay this youth of their time, and they spent their time to honor their ancestors who were murdered, raped, enslaved, displaced. These youth are proof of people who survived racial erasure, they survived ethnic cleansing, and all they want to hear is, I see you. All they want to hear is, I see what your people went through, I see your pain, and we are here with you. It's not that hard. That's all I was going to say.
Hello, everyone, my name is Hunter Meldlin, and I wanted to talk about the proclamation, because there's a lot of people here that are confused what the proclamation is, some may or may not be, but I keep hearing the Save the Kelseyville people talk about Save the Kelseyville. But, to my understanding, this is about the proclamation. And the proclamation is nothing to do with the name at all. All it is, is to tell you where the land came from. And I'm personally Yorick, so I don't know whose lands this was, so I can't tell you, but that's all it is, is to tell you where you're at. And it's really confusing to me, seeing all the old people get butthurt over the fact that we just want to tell you. over the fact that we just want to tell you what village or what land you're on. And it has nothing to do with the name change in Kelseyville at all.
My good day. We can call Billy Hakey Alumbak Yehaki Katsa Diba. This tribal ID card is what gives me the right to say that I'm Indigenous from this community, from my tribe and my village. No other group in this country has to proclaim, carry a card around to determine, you know, one of the board members got to acknowledge their ethnicity and their background. We don't get to do that unless we carry a card around. So I want to remind folks about the racism that still exists in this country that they may not be aware of. I speak tonight on behalf of the organization that represents, does a lot of work within the Lake County area. I want to discuss this profound importance and deep significant issue that we're looking to adopt the land acknowledgement. And that the understanding that renaming a community or acknowledging the first people of this land are not intertwined concepts. Importantly, the name and the place does not create a community. Rather, it's the relationships that we forge with one another that truly define and build a community. As we gather here in the village of Chabene Po, the Aboriginal homelands of those that we know as today as Big Valley Rancheria, it is important to remember that our children are always watching us and listening to us. They observe the decisions that we make, and more importantly, the manner in which we communicate with one another. I find it very disheartening that some of the students felt like they couldn't express themselves openly because of the contentious issue that the adults made contentious. They are learning from our actions today, what it means to be a community member that honors the past while building a future. We have the power to end the cycle of lateral violence. Indigenous people have long exhibited remarkable resilience and adaptability confronting drastic changes in our environment, lands, and water, changes that threaten our very existence. Our sacred mountain, Kono Ktai, has been desecrated, and our pristine waters, vital to our communities, are now contaminated. These truths should be discussed, not dismissed. When we discuss land acknowledgements, it's important to recognize that they are not merely symbolic gestures. They are powerful tools of truth and history. Acknowledging the first people who have inhabited these lands for millennia are vital steps toward understanding and healing. They remind us that our recognition of history holds immense power that can acknowledge past injustices, and that it is the first step towards rectifying them. They're also educational, teaching us about the rich and diverse history of our community. While no one here today can be blamed for the injustice of the past, we all bear the responsibility for the legacy that we leave for our children. We hold the power to shape the future. By embracing land acknowledgement, we not only honor the contributions and history of Indigenous people, but we instill in our children the values of respect, acknowledgement, and healing. Your active participation is crucial. In closing, let us commit to our principles, not at the end of our journey, but as an ongoing process. A process where every step taken in the direction of truth, understanding, and mutual respect. Let us build a community where every member, young and old, knows their history, recognizes the value of every culture, and moves forward toward collective responsibility in creating a just and equitable society. Thank you.
Ditto. No, I'm just kidding. Like you said. No, I just want to introduce myself. Some of you guys know me up there. My name is Danette Rangel. I'm a tribal member from Big Valley, lands that you guys are all on now. And I just represent my family and who I'm from, you know, where I'm from. I have children that come here to this district. We live in the Lakeport district, but we choose to come here. And I have eight children that come here. One graduated last year. He had some of those traditional regalia on. And he was honored to wear that and proud of that. And he would have loved to have a land acknowledgement at his ceremony. So if we can make this happen going forward, I think it's a great, huge step in the right direction for all of our people and all of our community. I represent Kelseyville, whether it's that name, whether it's the history. That's where my kids go. And that's who I represent here today, is my children. I have high schoolers, I have middle schoolers, and I have elementary kids. And I have an upcoming kindergartner. So that's why I'm here today, to speak up on it. You know, I don't have hate in my heart for the history and the past that's been done, but I do carry my generations that are coming behind me. And that's who I represent today. And I would appreciate it if this resolution was passed. A simple acknowledgement and the move in the right direction. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Dorn. I'm from Kelseyville. Tom Makin was my...
You have to get closer to my microphone.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so I'm from Kelseyville. I went to school here. I'm really happy to hear from Danette, that really also is from here, because it does seem like we have a lot of people from outside. I'm not familiar with really anyone on the board from just my experience in the school. So I'm not sure that, I mean, you might be in between my time...
Born and raised.
Born and raised, okay, good. I'm subbing here now. I've been working in Lakeport before as a special ed teacher like yourself. And I do just want to point out that a lot of the things that you're talking about, the trauma and intergenerational effect, is pretty pseudoscientific. It's not, you may have, be able to cite your papers or whatever. Other people can cite papers that show that this is basically kind of a pseudoscientific religion, and these things are disputed. And in that, which kind of brings us to like, why is all this happening? Why is it coming to Kelseyville instead of the other districts? You guys, this is political. This is completely political. You're getting people from out of the town that are interested in having power in Kelseyville and for whatever purposes. You know, respect to the tribes, they have interests here too. But when you look at what land acknowledgements are, you can see from the things we saw from Pasadena, these are copy-paste political actions that people are making across the country. And why? Because it does transfer power. And I would question, I mean, I definitely hear Danette is an authentic person. I would question whether that is the representative voice of the tribe. Sure, if I was in the tribe, I wouldn't want to speak out against it. And I see a borderline racist assuming, assuming someone shows up from the tribe, that they speak for all the tribe. These are individuals. And there's plenty of people that are not speaking. I know some classmates, some Pomo classmates from our time, that are not, you know, in line with this. Part of what these land acknowledgements do is just get everyone pray in front of, you know, we're all on this, and therefore now the next thing that you're going to ask, like changing the name. Like, which is why it's here right now. That's why they have this draft, and then they took out all the language and made it seem political, is that we want, because you're trying to present a look that is not political. And that's basically deceptive on many levels. And I think that the tribes and the people of Kelseyville need to be a little skeptical of these people coming in. You can look out, it's a nationwide movement. These are all political statements.
I am really nervous, so I just want to put that out there.
Me too.
Y'all have stated that this resolution isn't political, but it's very obvious. Just by omitting and revising the original resolution, makes it political. I am just, you know, I see these lovely, I'm throwing this out. I'm just going to speak from my heart. Y'all, I sat there and just talked to the woman standing in front of me that has eight children. Wonderful, I mean, I said four words to her. And she spoke from her heart. And that's what I am happy to do. This is political. You revised it, the resolution, a couple of times to take out the land, the name of Kelseyville. That makes it political, because it's charged, it's a... Given the fact that Kelseyville's name is under attack, it's under attack. You felt the need to put that in the resolution, and, oh, I got to take it out, because, you know, that could mean it's political. It's political. We've all read it. We've all read and seen the revisions. And it just screams and reeks that you are already decided on what you're going to do. And really, it should be tabled. Given the chance, given the fact that, you know, the whole name change and census for healing are, you know, such a big to-do, this resolution does not belong into here and the now. It needs to be tabled for now or for good. You know, we all acknowledge, at least I do, that the wonderful, beautiful Indigenous people that I have come across, and we're not denying that. We're just, this isn't the right time. It's not the right time. And you, in your 40-minute speech, you went way out of your lane. This is supposed to be a school board, maybe not an educational, you know, 40-minute speech trying to gaslight us in repeating, you know, all that you said. You know, you went out of your lane. And I'm not going to be ashamed to say that. It's just not the right time. And I apologize for being nervous and rambling on like a bumbling idiot. But I hope I got my point across. You know, you're all elected. Y'all can be unelected and unappointed. And if you cast this resolution, you failed the students, because you're actually catering to a very small demographic, which is 2.8% of the entire student body, or the entire district.
Good evening. My name is Matt Carpenter. And first of all, I would like to thank the board for the second meeting. It was slightly crowded the last time they met. And I appreciate the remarks that there was a revision to take out the name. I think that took a lot of steam away from that. I would like to ask the board to consider perhaps a slightly modified resolution to take away some of the inflammatory language that was in the other one. And I beg to differ with our esteemed board member, but some of that was inflammatory. And I realize for some people, there are words in English that if you haven't used to grow up with hearing them, you don't find them inflammatory. It's just like foreign cuss words. I don't know what it means to them, but it sounds fine to me. So my suggestion to the board is, is there was once submitted in the board packet that was a recommended change to that, which is page 21, and then possibly a land acknowledgement on page 22. I strongly suggest the board tonight, look that over and see if a modified resolution might not be the best action to sort of cover the bases. Now, as I was sitting there, someone did suggest something that is possible. And I have actually two thoughts on that. One of them is certainly to have perhaps a separate part of a special ceremony as part of the graduation festivities for the Native students. And the other thing I suggest the district is to remind ourselves, what is the purpose of this resolution? If the purpose of the resolution is educational in nature, it seems to me that there are plenty of things that we could be educated about from the Native culture, which is greatly to be admired, and it is important to be studied, both in terms of their language and their customs and their history. That certainly should be done. It easily could be done here. There are several people in the county I can think of offhand that could easily set something up like that. And I put myself at the disposal of the board if you need assistance in doing something like that. But I think that that would be very important for our students and for the community. And quite frankly, I think it's foolish to rehash the past. I think it is foolish to make these kinds of things. We're talking about education, let's do some education. And I think the solution is to back away from some of the language. And I think that that could work. And I think there is language that is there, that is possible to be found, so that you actually could come to an agreement where we would agree on those things for the sake, as we said, of these students to grow up and appreciate their heritage. And I thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fleming McLeod, and I'm the tribal chairman of Big Valley Rancheria. You know, just like a couple of people that were up here, I'm really nervous to speak to, right? Because of the whole issue that's at hand. So, you know, a gentleman spoke earlier that there's one person that, you know, they can't possibly speak for the whole tribe, right? She comes from the tribe. She is the people of that tribe. She's related to almost everybody in that tribe, as well as myself. So she knows what our tribe is going through, what it's been through. So I believe she has the right to speak on what our people... Furthermore, you know, I grew up in a city, right? Where there wasn't that much Native Americans. It was mostly African-Americans, Mexicans, whites, and a few natives, right? And I come up here, and it's a whole different demographic. And I've never seen any of this kind of stuff before. And it's really, really blatant, right? It's really blatant. I know my people's history, right? I know what they've been through, I know what they suffer, and I see every day what they continue to still go through. Our children, our women, our adults. And I see what they go through, and it's from what they went through in the history. You can't say that it is over, because we still live it. We still have to see it. You know, and we still feel like their feet on our necks, no matter how much economic development we do, what we bring to these counties, what we bring to the city, what we bring. We still have this foot on our neck. And all we're asking is for a little acknowledgement, it's like, we see you, you know, because our kids will remember that. They're like, we were not recognized. We were nobody to these people, you know? And that's all we are asking. For when our children grow up, they don't have to feel like they're less than. And I just ask that. I'm supporting this proclamation, you know? You go, and like Gilbert said, you have an announcement in Spanish and English, but you don't have no land acknowledgement. It's a little pair. And that hurts some people so much, because they're afraid to lose what they have. But we are not coming to take it. We just want to be a part, if you recognize what your community. That's all it is.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening. Steve Stanley, Kelseyville. No one is, no one in this room is saying that the atrocities of the Kelsey family did not happen. This proclamation, though, is political, like the one that they are set. This board is here to educate, is to oversee the education of our children.
Political. And you're a board that is supposed to educate students. And I feel like, yeah, that is your job, to educate all students. And I feel like it's what you did tonight. And it's sad that you're getting kicked back, Gilbert, because you're educating, because it's seeming like there's more hate towards the actual action behind it and trying to resolve the past amongst our people, because there's so much naivety, right? And I didn't want to come up here and get political. I work with politics every day. I'm speaking from my heart right now. Lost my train of thought. But what is going to happen if we wait for the name change? Is that if we don't win, or, I'm not saying I'm just taking a side, but say the name change stays, say the name stays, then are you guys going to be for this? I mean, when is it going to happen? Do we have, why do we have to wait? This is just a simple acknowledgement of all of our graduates, but acknowledging that you are on original Big Valley Rancheria Pomo lands. That's it. Like my brother said, Lady McLeod, the chairman, it's acknowledging that you guys are on our land. And we're going to be here forever. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for all the work that you do every day. This has been a tough situation for all of you, and I just want, as Board members, and I wanna acknowledge that. Um, I want to remind you of your purpose. This is your purpose statement from the internet. Our fundamental purpose is to ensure that all students learn at high levels and leave KU, uh, KVUSD college and career-ready. So your job is really to ensure that the school is doing their job, the schools are doing their job in Kelseyville, and that they're educating students. It's not to be political. And, um, I do also feel that this is a very political time. I'm very sad for my community. I'm sad for Kelseyville. I'm sad for the current residents, and I'm sad for the sisters and brothers I have that are indigenous people in this area. Because this fight right now is not good. And, um, I would ask that you would listen to your students and table this until the name change happens. Because unfortunately, this happened during that time. Whether it's part of it or not, it is happening during the time that the name change is happening. And so there, it is causing political strife, whether we like it or not. Um, I also wanted to read to you a statement, because I am a third-generation Kelseyvillian, and, um, three graduates, um, from Kelseyville, um, in my family. And I currently have a grandchild who is currently going to Kelseyville schools. And, um, I grew up with a bunch of Pomo students who I still love and I consider my friends. Um, not everyone is speaking out because they're scared. Um, and I wanna make sure that you, um, hear this, um, opinion. As an indigenous person whose family was part of local schools, I cringe every time I hear someone read the land acknowledgement verbatim, or at all. It feels forced and not empathetic. And it just makes me cringe, knowing it's not likely that the person reading it knows much, if anything, about the indigenous people's practices or lands, or the true impact of the schools. That trauma and loss, it feels like a forced part of government to satisfy the minds of non-indigenous people so that they feel like they are doing something and taking accountability. And I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan McColl. I have, uh, with three girls and a niece student at school. I've been a homeowner in Kelseyville for quite some time. My life started years ago when I was a little boy. My family used to bring me up here. My mother used to dance with the Native Americans. A lot of people don't know that. I look out for American, but I have Native blood in me too. So I want people to understand, what I'm hearing here today, I understand change is hard. Change is difficult. I'm a counselor in this county, and I've been a counselor for a decade. And I see a lot of youth and a lot of adults who've been traumatized by the history. I'm not trying to change a man. I'm here to invoke empathy, genuineness. Uh, come out of there now, and let's do something that helped our county. Now, we haven't evolved. People say, "Oh, we can do it later, we can do it again, we can do it now." What happened in the last fifty years? We have seen no change. And I'm catching from both sides, because I'm Afro-American and I'm Native American. If I can forgive, if I can move forward, if I can evolve, if I can love, and it don't matter what color, who they are, men or female, large, small, tall, wide, no maybe, heavy, I have everything. I have dignity, I have understanding. And here, today, we need some understanding. People been hurt. People been traumatized. If we walk around like that, it hasn't happened. It didn't happen. My time is short. Look, we need to evolve. Kelseyville needs to evolve. If that's, you're letting go in a land acknowledgement, let's do it. That's kibble and bitch. The man would have taken place. That's small stuff. We need to be doing jumps and hops, hoopla stuff, for Kelseyville and for Lake County. Thank you very much.
Nisham, Nisham, Shakay, Shakay, Katie Ray, Shaboshah. No Malaki is Keta. Waalaki is Keta. Wintum is Keta. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Katie Ray. I'm an enrolled member of Round Valley Indian Tribes, and I'm the Victim Services and Programs Manager for Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Behind me, I have many students who go to school here in Kelseyville, at Kelseyville High, Kelseyville Elementary, Mount Vista Middle School. Many of these youth painted this beautiful mural for you outside. They spent their time and energy on their vacation to give something to the community for healing, to bring us together. This proclamation, thank you, Gilbert, for bringing this. Gilbert reached out to me and asked me what I thought about this when he first wrote it. I said, "If you're gonna do this, you have to do this right." Because he had only Pomo people in there. I said, "You have to put each individual tribe in there to honor them, honor the original inhabitants of this area as we always should." I'm not from here. My family was forced from the Chico area by John Bidwell, which everything is named Bidwell, into Round Valley. We were forcibly removed, and many of my ancestors died along the way. May fifteenth is Bloody Island massacre, and that happened in eighteen fifty. If not now, when? When are we going to make change to bring healing, to include these youth in what we do? I'm one of the coaches for Kelseyville High School. I'm one of the Native American Club Advisors for Kelseyville High School. I'm on the DAC Committee for this district. I'm on the NAP for this district. I'm on TYEC for all districts in this county. When are we going to include natives as a whole within this entire community? When are we going to stop having segregated ceremonies for natives? Why can we not be included as a whole within this entire whole community? We need to have healing, and in order to have healing, we need to be included. Thank you.
So keep them all in line, but you guys decide, you guys decide. Because those could all be your kids as well.
First of all, I'd like to say that my name is Mary Beth Bordeaux. I was a teacher in this wonderful school district for over thirty years. I want to say, I want to say, and I don't want to turn my back on anyone, that we're not in a circle. This is wrong. I want to say we have a crisis. But in every single crisis, there is an opportunity for growth, for beauty, for becoming more than what we have been, and more than what we currently are. This town, this wonderful place, that has been in existence as a center of the world, as a town that has accepted people. I'm a member of a interracial marriage. When I came here, people spit on the ground when I held my hand in my husband's hands. And I, for one, don't wanna go to jail. So, um, I did not discuss this, um, when it first was submitted with anybody other than the Board President. So, we are allowed to talk to one person on the Board, and that is it. We are not allowed to speak to each other in groups. So I'm not sure if any of you knew that, but I wanted to make that, um, clear. Um, also, I wanted to talk about the reason why at graduation, we have, uh, Spanish-speaking, um, portions. Our district is forty-five point four percent Hispanic. And of that population, there are many, many, many families, parents, young children working through our district who do not speak English. They don't understand English. They don't read and write English. So for us to leave that huge contingent out of graduation ceremonies by not having portions of it spoken in Spanish would be a disservice to those parents and those students. It's not that we're being exclusive to other ethnicities, to other languages. It's just a fact. We have a lot of Spanish-speaking students in our school district, and with that comes Spanish-speaking parents and grandparents. So it's really important that when they do have a graduation, they're included in that garbage that comes out of the principal's mouth, the student's mouth, other representatives during the graduation ceremony. Not sure if you understood why we have a bilingual graduation. Um, I also wanted to, um, just commend Mr. Del Bosco, the Senior Class President, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name. I'm sorry, ASB President and Senior Class President, and I apologize, I don't remember your name. Yes, thank you. Um, you know, that took a lot of courage to go around and ask students and, and come up with a survey. He did this on his own, um, about what they felt, and I think that's important. We have, um, many different student groups on campus at the high school. We have our Native American Club. They did a beautiful presentation, um, at our March Board Meeting. They shared with us about their club, their, the mural that they did here at the high school and at the elementary school. And I think the students' voices are very important. They're important to me. That's why I was, chose to fill, I wasn't elected, I chose to fill a board position because my heart desire was to help students and not get in the middle of any kind of political fray other than what it relates to education. Because there are some things within education that become very political. So I just wanted to commend the senior, or the student body president, and I wanted to make a suggestion, he's not here, but maybe the Senior Class President and Mr. Jones could relay that to him. Wouldn't it be beautiful if you guys sat down with Mr. Jones and a counselor, and maybe you, as a collective student group, come up with something for this year's graduation to include our indigenous students, our Native American population of seniors that may be walking across the stage this year? Wouldn't that be great? And it's student-led. Isn't that what we want? Student-led. So I would encourage you guys to do that, and meet with Mr. Jones, and meet with the school counselor about that, just like the Hispanic community does, or the Hispanic students do. You guys do it too, right? Okay. I'm not, I'm not looking for applause. I just wanted to, um, just clear, just clear some things out. You know, a lot of issues were brought to the Board tonight that were really out of our jurisdiction. They have, we have absolutely no control or say, um, in a lot of these things that were discussed tonight. And I, I understand, um, the passion. I understand the need to express your opinion about how you feel. It is really important. And this was awesome. This was a great forum for that. It'd be great if we could line up chairs on both sides of Main Street in Kelseyville and have a podium, or do a round circle, or whatever, and talk as a community like that instead of having it be, uh, based in a school board meeting. That would be really awesome. And I'd go to that, and I participate. But, um, anyway, I just, I just really wanted to just, uh, just let you know that there's a lot of things that are perceived that the Board does that get put on social media, um, that we don't do because we're not allowed to. It's illegal for us to do that. And, um, I just wanted to make that statement so that hopefully that we clear up any confusion or misunderstanding.
Okay, I guess we'll just work our way down the line. So, this school board has absolutely no power to change the name of Kelseyville. It has no power to eliminate a monument. I don't know what, I, I personally, I'm actually, the whole Board received many, many, many emails, some of whom started out with, "Please don't change the name of my town. We can't do this." So, I really appreciate the input tonight, um, what everybody had to say. I don't like to hear what one side or the other side, because when you talk about division, those words are divisive in themselves. The, some of the members that spoke tonight, some of the members of the community talked about, "We should be doing things to educate the kids. If the kids are not connected to the school, we cannot educate them." A group of students is saying, "Please see me. Please recognize me. I am a person." And I think that is extremely, extremely important. And we need to get there. Another, uh, fact that came up was, and I'm gonna put this bluntly, the people that are worried about the name change are fearful that an action that we take will cause some sort of unfair, uh, favoritism towards eliminating the name. They, there's fear of, and rightfully so, there's a fear of the government, of the Bureau of Geographic Names. Who knows who these people are? However, please come back in July, when, please come back to this room in July when they come here for a town hall to get your input. Because they're making the decision, not us. They wanna hear what you have to say as well. Because that fear is so great, and because that fear is so divisive at this point in time, I, my, my strong feeling that we need to recognize the lands is also accompanied by a strong feeling that maybe the time is not right now, but will be after the government gets out of our town. So...
Justice delayed, is justice denied? Vote now! What's the holdup?
Thank you. Okay. That's pretty much, you know, where, where I'm feeling right now. I know, no, no. Yeah, we're going down the line. We started with Hannah. Skip Gilbert because, yeah, it's forty-five minutes, and you guys got upset. I, I'm showing where I'm feeling, and, like everybody else in this room, I'm respecting what you have to say, and if you choose to respect what I have to say, that's fine. I can live with that.
Um, my name is Casey Carlson. Uh, I was a mentor in those relationships. Um, I hear a lot of talk about how Kelseyville is a friendly town, and I believe that. I believe that it is. And I have been a very grateful beneficiary of the friendliness of this town. You know, I think about that word, friendliness, about being friendly, being a friend, and I think, you know, well, what, what do we do when we have friends who are struggling? We, we lend it... We lend a hand, we lend words of encouragement. And you can say, "Oh, those are just words." Words do matter, you know? I can tell you 100%, you know, I lost my sister about a year and a half ago. And so I see faces right now that came to our family and said, "Whatever you need, we're here for you, we got you." And that mattered. You know, it mattered a lot to feel supported and to feel seen in a time where we were struggling. So to me, acknowledging people and rebuilding those relationships in hopes of supporting more success overall for the community is a positive thing. Now, I also think there are, I understand the concerns of people that this is getting mixed up with the name change situation. I completely understand that. I agree that that's not a good thing to have this mixed up with the name change situation. I would hope that maybe we could consider writing a formal letter to the Geographical Names Committee on behalf of the school district to formally, you know, make known our neutral position. And that might be something that would alleviate those concerns for some people.
I was fortunate enough to be out there in spring break with kids from a Native American Club, working on murals that surround the Brerly area. And they are gorgeous. And what an honor it was to see these kids do something that the whole community took notice of and the whole community could be proud of. So for those who don't think that you're seen, I can see you four blocks away. Gorgeous. So I appreciate the Native American Club for doing that. A resolution from the school board is a piece of paper. Doesn't mean anything. And quite frankly, the timing of it does strike me as a little bit. I think what we need to do is do better. I don't think it's the school board's place to weigh in on this. I think it's the school board's place to make sure that all of our students are acknowledged. I agree with Sarah. I think that the senior class, and these are the kids who didn't have an eighth grade graduation because of COVID. Let the senior class sit down with the counselors and with their principal and discuss a way to work out a native prayer, a native acknowledgement, some sort of reading, so that everyone feels incorporated, everybody feels welcome. But this is, this is not the purpose of the school. We're here to make sure that your kids have science textbooks that aren't 16 years old by the time we get around to replacing them. We are here to make sure that middle schoolers aren't being taken off campus by ambulance because they got beaten so bad by another student. That's what we're here to do. But this is not our place. I'm glad that we were able to bring the community together for a conversation so that everybody had an opportunity to be heard. I think the community even further needs to do more with this. But this is not what the school board is for. And I would encourage our senior students, get together with your classmates, with the counselor, with the principal. Given that this is such a national community, and see if you can come up with ways to incorporate something in graduation that is healing and still respectful of the students' feelings and move forward in that direction. But having a school board mandate something that's gonna change people's attitudes or views, that has to come from your heart, that has to come from your soul. We need to do better as a community. And a piece of paper from a school board isn't gonna make it so. That's my opinion.
As you can see, this school board has different thoughts. We had come here with, who was it that told me at the last meeting? "Do you have your mind made up?" And I said, "No, I came here to listen." And she goes, "No, you didn't." I said, "Well, why did you ask me?" So I'm hearing a variation here. I'm hearing the importance of having the native population, especially the native students, recognized through some sort of acknowledgement. And a recommendation that comes from the students. I'm also hearing a mix, and I don't know what the book is, I'm just hearing a mix, as to whether the resolution is the important part here or whether that should just maybe be discussed further down the line.
You don't actually need a resolution to do a land acknowledgement.
We do not need, we do not need permission to do a land acknowledgement. We do not need to do a resolution to do a land acknowledgement. But because the land acknowledgement has become so intertwined with the resolution, we need to consider how we move ahead. Because we asking people to come out here so we can listen to you. And then we need to really seriously think about what you said. Everybody, you know, not one side, the other side. Everybody's opinion is valuable. And I cannot judge people's pain either side. I cannot judge people's fears on either side. That's, I can't do that. So.
I think our students' opinions count the most. I would love to see them get together.
Yeah, I agree.
And have them get together and see if they can come up with a land acknowledgement on their own for their graduation. And we can always revisit this, but you know.
I would hope.
Because this is not what we're gonna do.
I would hope we could get to that point. We'll go back to 30. Because I hope we can get to that point. But you know, we had 114 of the seniors polled and 74 of them expressed their desire not to.
Well, I think given.
74 out of 114 voted.
Oh, I'm sorry. 74 out of 114, okay. 60% were opposed to that of that 74.
But what were the questions asked? You don't know?
I don't, I don't tell either, but it's time for the board to discuss this. I know.
I have a voice. And Mr. President, Mr. President? Maybe they could get some clarification. Maybe they were assuming that the land acknowledgement was a resolution and not its own entity. Maybe, maybe Mr. Jones could help facilitate, you know, the president, student body president Del Bosco to look at the context and make sure that there was an understanding of what they were actually being pulled.
You're giving a head nod to that. Can you enlighten us a little bit?
It was, we were not confident as to what a policy we were out of. We voted so in tune.
Okay. And you, yes?
The question was similarly, we wanted a complication or not? It was a yes or a no?
Okay, so we're on. And it seems to me to be simple.
It should be simple. It should not.
On a point of clarification.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The board is now in discussion. Thank you.
Could the board clarify whether this resolution is voted to the highest?
Sir, this isn't a time for public comment. This is the time for board discussion. And we need everybody to respect that so we can continue with the meeting and move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think a land acknowledgement is fairly agreeable for everybody who we acknowledge to occupy this land.
I think, I think that the boards, there's a consensus.
We don't need a resolution. I do believe, I do agree with Superintendent Thomas. However, I do feel that the senior class, since it's their graduation, until this politically charged issue has been resolved, it's still the senior class's graduation. And they should have some say because they did express a concern about it here tonight. So yes, I do believe the Native American Club should get involved in that discussion. But we do not want to leave the seniors out of it. It is their graduation.
I believe, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there are some seniors in the Native American Club. So I think they can work together. And I agree on the education piece. I do want to remind the board, there is a law that was passed. And we do, there will soon be an ethnic studies course that will be taught at the high school level. And part of that course will focus on educating our, on the history of the tribes in our community, which will, I think, benefit our community.
I think part of the issue too for the seniors, and I have a son who's graduating this year, and I do them on carpool, I've got the fun bus. And part of my discussion with these kids is that this has become so divisive and so political in the community. They don't want it at their graduation. These are the kids that had to drive through eighth grade graduation because of COVID. This is their graduation. They don't want any part.
Good point.
So, you know, have members of the senior class and seniors in the Native American Club sit down with the principal and craft something that everyone's comfortable with for their graduation. It's about the kids. See, it's not about us.
Okay, so as I understand it, there is no need for any after, because we're redirecting it to the students. The resolution that's causing so much fear and divisiveness will not be discussed in the near future. It will be kid, I mean not kid, it will be, it will be moved down where it is no longer an influence on one another.
So you would need to make a motion to table, to table a resolution or to not approve that resolution from the board?
If you can, we're gonna bring it back. So do you want to table it till after there's a decision on the name change? Okay. Is there a motion, is there a motion on the tabling the resolution till after there is a decision from the government? I move that. Okay, motion by Rick, by Mary Beth. All in favor? Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you all for your attendance. And I hope that you remember. Do we have anything for advance agenda?
I'd like to make a resolution that the board doesn't have any more resolutions.
I agree with that. Okay. Thank you all for your attendance. This meeting is adjourned.